Let's turn the lights on. Lights, cameras, action. It's Tuesday, February 3rd. I want to welcome everyone to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonnebustiano, Sodio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Caressca, Corian, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Wesson, 12 members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Caressca moves. Ms. Martinez seconds, next.
Committed to resolutions for approval.
Mr. Sodio moves and Mr. Bloomingfield seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, it is Tuesday. Now would be the time for the flag salute.
If I could ask everyone to please rise. We'll be led in today's flag salute by Ms. Nuri Martinez.
Please stand, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes, why don't we begin?
Items 1 through 3 are items noted for public hearing. There are cards on item number 1.
Okay, let's hold item 1 on specials. Members, items 2 and 3, I see none. Let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, let's move on to items 4 through 23.
Items 4 through 23 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials, members, specials. Mr. Parks?
Yes, I'd like to have special number 6, number 12, and number 21.
Okay, if we could hold items 6, 12, and 21 for... And a 47?
We're not there yet.
Well, let's deal with the category we're in right now. So 6, 12, 21 will hold for Mr. Parks. Mr. Caressca?
Thank you, Ms. President. Item 23, please.
23 for Mr. Caressca, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, items 13 and 21, please.
Well, 21 has already been held. Let's add 13. Specials, any other specials, members? I do not see any. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Let's move on to our next section on the agenda.
Items 24 through 45 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body? If I remember correctly, was Mr. Parks wanted to hold 41? Item 47? Okay, we have one more section and we'll get there. Okay, um, do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items 24, 25, 27, 30, 35, 36, 37, 38, 43, and 45.
Okay, are there any remaining items to vote on?
Yes, there are.
Well, let's do that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next.
On the supplemental agenda, items 46 and 47 are items which public hearings have been held. Item 47 is called special by Councilmember Parks.
Okay, what about item 46, special? Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where?
Item 48 is an item which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is before this body. Do we have any cards? Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Okay, it's my understanding we have two presentations today. Mr. Caressca? Would you like to? Okay, so... If I can ask Mr. Labange to pinch-hit for me once again.
Now would be called on for special presentation, the President of the Los Angeles City Council, the great Councilman of the 10th District, Mr. Herb Wesson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Okay, now, I just threw all my notes out of the table. What I'm gonna ask, members, this is a very, very, very special time for us in the African-American community. This is African-American Heritage Month. So today and tomorrow, we begin our celebration. As you can see, I have some very good-looking people surrounding me in some gorgeous colors. I'm gonna ask you, if you would, to kinda come up here with me. I see my fraternity brothers, my alphas, to my left. Come on, come on. Can we free them, sergeants? Let my people go. Every year, since I've been a member of this body, we have celebrated African-American Heritage Month in our own way, by taking the bridge from City Hall to City Hall East and having an exhibit, photos, you name it, we've had it. We started out with an exhibit about every African-American member who'd ever been elected to the City Council. We had my favorite display, which dealt with every black administrator, assistant general manager for the city of L.A. We honored them for being the glue that they are, that keeps this city together. We even had a phenomenal display when President Obama was first elected president, and that was on our... Last year, we had African-American inventors, and this year, a very special one. Members, in the early 1900s, it was not a very good time to be black in America. It was a very, very abusive time for us. Our rights were trampled on. In December 4th of 1906, a group of seven guys, who were students at Cornell University, were having a conversation about the year before that the African-American class at Cornell was like six. None of them returned. So they had a conversation about how can we help each other? Provide mentoring, tutoring? How can we survive being on campuses where we are excluded from everything? So on that cold snowy night, seven men, known as the Seven Jewels, created the first African-American fraternity in the United States of America, the World, and that was Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity. And those are the gentlemen that you see in black and gold. Notice I have on black and gold. But once it started, we wound up with several other fraternities and several sororities, comprising a group that we named with love, the Divine Nine. On the display that you will see today, it will be the start of every fraternity and sorority in this country. You'll hear about their founding members, the things that they had to go through, but most importantly, the thing that I think means the most, every fraternity and sorority, they were started for the same reason, which was to fight injustice, to move the civil rights movement forward, that really didn't exist at that time, to fight for the rights of women. Do you believe it that in, I wanna say in the 1920s or 30s, that our Delta Sigma Thetas were marching? My wife just corrected me. Now, wait a minute, anyway. Who put my wife behind me? That is my question. But they voted in the, they marched in the rights for, in the fight for women's rights, all women. These fraternities and sororities have been in the forefront, the history, in making history for this great country that we live in. The Divine Nine, when you look at the civil rights movement, we were all over the civil rights movement. We were committed to our fraternities and sororities and the individuals that went to the colleges where we attended, but also even then, back at the turn of that century, our eyes was on the prize and we wanted to lift the boat, not just for African-Americans in this country, but for all individuals who suffered from the injustices that we suffered from. Many of you have just witnessed the movie called Selma, that depicted a very narrow time in the history of this country, where we were fighting for the right to vote, where there were laws in parts of this country, not just in the South, that did everything they could to suppress our right to vote, just like many cities and states are doing today. We were determined then, we are determined now. When you think about Selma and you think about that bridge, and who crossed that bridge? John Lewis, Congressman, I believe he was a Sigma, if I'm wrong? He was on that bridge. Coretta Scott King, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, the first women sorority in African-American country, she was on that bridge. Andrew Young, Ambassador to the United Nations, Mayor of the City of Atlanta, he was on that bridge. You cannot think of Martin Luther King without thinking about the Reverend Ralph Abernathy, Kappa Alpha Psi, he was on that bridge. And maybe one of the greatest civil rights leaders of all time, Dr. Martin Luther King, A Phi A, he was on that bridge. We are a part of history in this country, and we have always been and will always be leaders. Each and every fraternity and sorority tries to get its members to... tries to get its members to strive for perfection, to aim for the stars, to be the very best that you could be. I would not be standing before you today if I weren't inspired, at the age of 17, to join this fraternity. This is where I found, being an Alpha, that's how I found out what I wanted to do. So on this display, you will hear and read and see the history. We have former, a man who blazed a trail for me, sitting in the audience today, Dave Cunningham. Former Councilman. I think he may be sitting with the Q Psi Phi. Q Psi Phi to the day I die. Our former Assistant General Manager, Reginald Jones Sawyer. Kappa Alpha Psi. Isidore Hall, who just was sworn in as State Senator, was a Omega Psi Phi. Mayor Tom Bradley. The greatest mayor in the history of this city. Kappa Alpha Psi. Who was involved and engaged with the Civil Rights Act and the Voting Rights Act. The Voting Rights Act, which is 50 years old. We celebrate its anniversary during this time. Willie Brown. The greatest speaker to ever run the state of California. A Phi A. So we've done an awful lot. Diane Watson. Yvonne Burke. AKA's. We have a young lady in Pasadena, who's a councilwoman right now. Councilwoman Robinson, who's running for mayor. Delta. 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 We have our own Jackie Dupont Walker. Commissioner. Delta. Paula Madison. Honorary. Delta. Mr. Fuentes. Oh, I don't have... Your staff member is... Where's Albert Lower? Aaron. Aaron is Albert. No, I didn't ask you to speak, I asked you to whisper. Sigma Gamma Row, works in your office. Uh-oh, son. So I could go on and on and... Oh, how could I forget? And this time, I'm glad somebody put my wife directly behind me. Our Deputy Mayor, Kelly Bernard. A Delta. And my favorite, the, my favorite Delta of all. My wife. Of 33 years. So that means I get to go home, sleep in my room, and watch whatever I wanna watch on television. But it's a very important walk through history, and I invite every one of you to come and find out who the... Oh, what is it? Bobby Rush. Sigma. Right? Bobby Rush, a Congressman from Illinois, is the last man to ever whoop President Barack Obama in an election. A member of our Divine Nine.
Mr. President, what's he doing now?
I think he's still a Congressman. He's in good stead. He's a good, the President forgives. Most of us forgive. Oh, I forgot, we wanna acknowledge our former Assemblyman, current Commissioner of Public Works, Kappa Alpha Psi, Mike Davis. I just did, Mike Davis. I just did, Mike Davis' wife. I just did, see where it says, Mike Davis. But go see the bridge. Don't just view our history, view the history of this great country and the role that we have all played in trying to make this country even greater than it already is. Now, do I have a representative, Albert, that's gonna say a few words? Jackie? Oh, wait, so... Now, I don't want you guys to to think that I'm just making this Alpha heavy, but we do have a representative of my fraternity that's gonna say a few words right now.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jonathan Green. Currently, I serve as the President-elect of the Los Angeles Branch of the National Pan-Hellenic Council. Presently, our President, Lynne Burns, who's a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. She's not able to make it, but she brings our greetings. What a day. What a wonderful day. What a glorious day for the Divine Nine. So you wonder who the Divine Nine, so let me introduce you to them. We have the ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, which was founded in 1908. We have the brothers of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, founded in 1911. We have the brothers of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity, founded in 1911. We have the lovely and devastating ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, founded in 1913. We have the brothers of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, founded in 1914. We have the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, founded in 1920. We have also the ladies of Sigma Gamma Row Sorority Incorporated, founded in 1922. And lastly, we have the brothers of Iota Phi Theta Fraternity, which was founded in 1963. Well, they're ear and spirit. But I would be remiss if I didn't announce the oldest, the coldest, those ice-cold brothers, founded in 1906, of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity. Can I get a 1119?
Oh, six!
Thank you. And before I just wrap this up, I would ask the question of, why is this important? Why are we here? Why is this display that we're so thankful that our President and also our Alpha Brother, Brother Herb Wesson Jr., has established? Give a hand. And I will give you those three points. Number one, historically, you don't know who you are unless you know where you came from. This display will let us people know that, hey, we have a great history. We are a great people. And we have made contributions, but it takes all of us to work and make things together. Number two is scholarship. The main aim of each organization is to promote that our students, male and female, graduate. I said, our aim is to make sure that each student graduate. Can I get an amen?
Amen!
All right, y'all a little quiet. That's our goal. And number three is service to our community. Each organization has programs in place that provide scholarships, help for the homeless, to reintegrate and bring people in, and to make this place, which is America, a place for all, inclusive. So lastly, in closing, I'd like to just thank you for our opportunity to be here. Thank you for Herb Wesson. Thank you to the Council, and may God bless you all.
And I have just been informed that, God rest his soul, Gil Lindsay. The Empire, what was he, the Emperor? The Emperor of the 9th District was a Sigma. All right? So... I can't say enough about the people who are standing beside me and behind me today. I can't say enough about the contributions to this great nation that each and every one of you would adjust your time to be here today so that we could show the City of Los Angeles that we are still active. And we're gonna show off our display, 'cause there's a bunch of good-looking people on that bridge, 'cause my wife is on it. Okay, I'm told that the AKA Regional Director is here by my wife. And where's she at, is she at us? Give her a round... Oh, right next to me. Say a couple of words.
Good morning. It is a pleasure to be here. On behalf of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, I'm the Far Western Regional Director. And so the nine states, westernmost states in the United States, including Alaska and Hawaii, are my territory. And we have many soros here today. Those are our sisters who came to show you that we support the City Council, but not only that, we support what Herb Wesson has done today by having us all here. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Dupont Walker, come on up here. We don't do this but once a year, representing the Deltas. Jackie, say a couple of words, come on.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we do have a number of our National Committee members here, representing Delta Sigma Theta, but we are just so pleased to be here today and to be saying thank you for celebrating the witness and work of all of the Divine Nine. Where there is action to be taken, we are ready to take action. Thank you.
Okay, let's keep it coming. Let me get, is Brother Parker, Keith Parker, from the Omegas? Are you, or who's the closest Q? Come on.
Right behind you, Chief.
They have backed me up and helped me in a lot of the work that I've done ever since I've been elected. Brother Parker, floor is yours.
I'm gonna yield my time to Brother David Cunningham.
Oh, of course we should. The great former Councilman of the 10th District, Dave Cunningham.
It's a great pleasure to be here with my Councilman and to be here on this occasion. And let me say to you, Mr. President, this was a very brilliant idea on your part to see the kind of contributions that individuals have made to the history of this great country of ours, this great state, this great county, and most of all, this great city. I also wanna remind you that one of the greatest things that ever happened, when I sat on this council, I was involved with three Kappas. Tom Bradley, Bob Farrell, and Judge Billy Mills. But it took one Omega to be able to make it happen. And so it's my pleasure to be back here with you, and God bless each and every one of you. And again, kudos to you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on, I wanna rep from everybody. I'm gonna save you for last. Come on, come on. Let's get a little blue in here. I want all the ladies to come up. These guys are gonna have to wait.
Greetings from our Grand International President, Mary Boro Wright. I am Karen Taylor Abbey, from the Sigma Delta Chapter of Long Beach. And we are so proud to be here. This is a great contribution to our community, to let people know that we are here, still doing the work of Zeta. And the Regional Representative to the National Nominee Committee for Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. Thank you.
All right, come on, keep them coming. Come on. Come on, I see, I see it. All right, Sigma Gamma Row.
Greetings from Sigma Gamma Row Incorporated. I didn't know I was gonna have to talk, and I don't have all my colors, but I do have on blue and gold somewhere. I just wanna say hello and thanks, and I'm so glad we were here, and God bless everyone. Thank you.
Let's get some... Oh, wait, come on. Identify yourself, let the world know.
My name is Jeffrey Sneed. I'm the 32nd Western Regional Director of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity. It is my pleasure to represent the men of Sigma today here in the Council chambers. I also wanna give a special shout-out to a member who is here, who's also a chief with the City of Los Angeles, our 19th Regional Director, Brother Jeffrey Whitmore. Given deference. It is a pleasure. My region covers from Colorado all the way to Kuwait City and everything in between. So for all the men, mostly service, men serve in the Pacific. So on behalf of all the servicemen and all the men of Sigma, thank you for this honor.
Where's Mike Davis? Did we have a Kappa? Come on, Mr. Commissioner. Just...
Yes, sir. Hello, everybody, hello. Well, I wanna thank the President. When I came to this town, this town was run by Kappa Alpha Psi in the name of Tom Bradley. And during that time, we had Johnny Cochran, and we had Ted Alexander over in the school system, but I knew it was just a matter of time when I got transferred over to the county under the direction of Herb Wesson, that it wouldn't be long that the alphas would try to take over. So as a member of Kappa Alpha Psi, we are very proud of the work that Greeks have done to have a positive impact on the community, and we look forward to working with the many Greeks in our city to continue to help to make Los Angeles great. Thank you.
Thank you, and did I miss, oh. I have a... Mr. President.
Greetings, City Council. Brother Wesson, I wanna thank you for allowing us. My name is Randy McKenzie. I'm the Southern California District Director for Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. And on behalf of our General President, Brother Marcus Tillman, and our Western Region Vice President, Brother Russell Lee Fly, I just wanna thank you all immensely for allowing us, the Divine Nine, to be here and to celebrate this during African-American History Month. Thank you.
Thank you, and did I miss anybody?
I've got Mr. Price right here. I wanna have Mr. Price.
Well, wait, let me, any, did I miss any of the... We're good.
We're good.
Okay, now, what did you say?
I'd like to say...
Mr. Price?
You're doing a good job. I wanna call the great Councilman of the new ninth, Kern Price.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm just so honored, I'm so happy that we're honoring the Divine Nine. Give yourselves a hand again, this is... You know, we know these organizations have really been pioneers in fighting for justice, fighting for freedom, expanding opportunities, encouraging academic excellence and community engagement. And so I'm just happy to join you as we celebrate the achievements of these organizations, individually and collectively. You know, you've been positive role models for generations, and will continue to do so. And I think it's significant that these fraternities and sororities certainly do great work individually, but they also collaborate through the Pan-Hellenic Council. And so I just want to congratulate you all for your service, for your commitment, for making Black history every day after serving our community. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. And now, on behalf of the Council... Oh, oh, this is cool. We have, signed by all of the members of the Council and the Mayor, we have certificates of recognition to every member of the Divine Nine. Here's the A Phi A. AKA. Sigma Gamma Row. Delta. Delta Sigma Theta. Phi Beta Sigma. Zeta Phi Beta. Robert, you can yell for Brother Alpha. Yes, you can. Iota Phi Theta. Kappa Alpha Psi. Well, Mike, you better come get this. Omega Psi Phi. Anyway, you, Counsel, I really appreciate the additional time that you've given us today. This is very special for us as a people. And again, I wanna thank all of the Divine Nine for coming. And you see, we have... And you see, we have been in competition with one another for over 100 years. It is friendly competition. It's what fuels the fire, and it's a brotherhood and a sisterhood that I think has helped make me the man I am today. God bless everyone. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Everybody, go visit the bridge. It is a remarkable display. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr....
Follow, follow them.
Mr. Coretts, is Mr. Coretts available? Coretts. Paul Coretts, do you have a special announcement here, Mr. Coretts? He's the center table.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will let the delegation clear out for another moment. Yeah, I'd like to introduce a delegation of the Jewish community from the country of Azerbaijan. Delegation includes rabbis, members of parliament, et cetera, and they are here to accept a safer Torah from Sinai Temple and take it back to their country, and they're visiting city council today. So let's acknowledge our visitors from Azerbaijan.
Thank you. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, it's a great honor to stand here with our council president, Herb Wesson, in recognition of one of our truly extraordinary public servants who, after a 47-year career of service, is retiring, and that's somebody that everyone in this chamber knows well, Charlie Mims. Give him a hand to Charlie Mims. You know, I've known Charlie for, I guess, 20 years from his community service, and I had no idea until I started getting ready for this resolution of the extraordinary extent of his lasting legacy to this city. Charlie started working for the City of Los Angeles in 1966. He's served six years in the Naval Air Reserve during the Vietnam era, and then came back to Los Angeles, worked for a little while for the County Flood Control District, but then came back to where he would remain for the rest of his career in service to the City of Los Angeles. The bulk of Charlie's career has been spent in construction administration and construction inspection, and in that role, Charlie has played a role and had a hand in some of the most important public infrastructure projects that have shaped the face of this city. Things like the Tillman Water Reclamation Plant, the Hyperion Treatment Plant, the extraordinary successful MTA Orange Line Project, MTA's Exposition Line Project, the 405 Widening Project through the Sepulveda Pass, Echo Park's, Echo Park Lakes renovation, Mr. O'Farrell, not once but twice. Charlie managed the response to the 94 earthquake for contract administration. He spent 20 years as a safety coordinator, making sure that the work that was being done by his coworkers here in the city is made as safe as possible for them to reduce the risk of on-the-job injuries. And Charlie saw the future, really, of this area of work and relied heavily upon, or laid the foundation for our heavy reliance on web-based information sharing, to make it a broader-based body of information across city platforms, across city departments, so that we could see what was going on in this city and plan accordingly. But it wasn't just Charlie's long history of great service professionally that makes him so special. At the same time that he was doing all of that, he was actually working for our communities just as a public servant devoted to his communities. He served on the Board of Lasers. He served on the Los Angeles Charter Commission, helping to create the new charter that would help lead this city. He was one of the founding members of the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council and served for many years on their board. He not only has made history here in the City of Los Angeles, but he now serves as Vice President of the Los Angeles City Historical Society. As I said, I've known Charlie for 20 years because he's been a community leader in the Griffith Park Franklin Hills area, which I had the privilege of representing in the State Assembly, but even before that, I knew Charlie through democratic circles, when our common club, Democrats for Neighborhood Action, and we all, of course, have had occasion to know Charlie, know the great work that he's done as one of our city's most respected labor leaders. All of you have had occasion, I'm sure, to witness the ethical, gentlemanly way that Charlie has always represented his members and always represented all of the public employees of the City of Los Angeles. So it's a great privilege for me, joining with Council President Wesson, to be able to recognize Charlie Mims for 47 years of exceptional service to the City of Los Angeles as an employee, as a labor leader, as one of our great community leaders as well. So let me introduce to you Charlie Mims. My pleasure.
Mr. Krikorian, thank you. Before he speaks, as his councilman, I wanna congratulate him and especially salute his wife Shirley, who's very involved in the community and the community affairs. All the things that you mentioned are so true, but also the Franklin Hills Residents' Association has the benefit of Charlie and Shirley, a double whammy home run. And the great thing, I just wanna say this, city employees who are engaged in their neighborhoods and their communities make great neighborhoods in Los Angeles. So plus-plus, Charlie Mims, for all your work there. Congratulations to you. And Mr. Krikorian, thank you for asking me to join you. I had to stay here. I do wanna report that Charlie is absolutely, every week, his trashcans are in by 5 o'clock, he's had no violation, and never outlaid on the cans. A good neighbor. Mr. Buscagno wants to say something nice.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for bringing Charlie here and recognizing his dedicated service to our city. We wish you the best in the last several years, last three years working together as Chair of Public Works. Your members have just been blessed by your leadership. You're fair, consistent, but your service to our city is just honorable, and we wanna thank you again and enjoy your retirement and really appreciate what you've done, your ongoing commitment, dedication to the people, not only that you represent, but also to our great city. Congratulations.
Mr. Sidio of the Great First District.
Charlie, you're leaving too soon. Can't you make it even 50?
Not according to my wife.
Just sincerely wanna say thank you. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your friendship, and thank you for your sage counsel to not just me personally, but also to all the working men and women of the city. You've been a sage, you've had a vision, and you've helped guide us through some really difficult times, and you've just always been there. And so I just wanna say to you from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much for being Charlie Mims.
Thank you, Mr. Sidio. Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I also wanna add my thank you, Charlie. I've known you the entire time I've been in City Hall, and both when I came initially in 1999 and when I left it, and now I'm back. And all along the way, I've gotta say that you've always been a real steward to your organization, and I think that's commendable, but the thing that I think sort of really makes me want to thank you even more is that you've always been very honest about what's good for you all, but more importantly, what's good for the City of Los Angeles. I know that you love this city. I've seen you fight for the City of Los Angeles, and I've known that that's really the impetus to what makes you such a great servant, and I'm really excited for what you're gonna do next, and I know that you won't be far, far away. So thank you very much for your service, and to the misses, thank you for lending them to us for as long as you did.
Mr. Bonnet.
Thank you, Mr. President. Charlie, I just wanted to rise and say thank you as well. I've known you in a few capacities. I've known you as a city employee. I remember you as a Charter Commissioner, and certainly I've known you as an official with Organized Labor. I was shocked when Mr. Krikorian read all of the other things you've done. I don't know where you found the time or the energy. It's really pretty, it's profound and incredible, and it's a level of love for your neighborhood and for the City of Los Angeles that is extremely rare. So, man, your wife Shirley deserves you back. So thanks and best wishes.
Mr. Weesar of the Great Fourteenth.
Charlie, congratulations and thank you for your service. Even when I was on the school board, you would go out and advocate for the city and promote collaboration between the two entities. I remember you back when, and we both looked the same. I look a little older, you look the same, but I wanna just thank you for the work you've done. You've been a great steward for the work you do. A job well done, and I just wanted to stand up and acknowledge the great work you've done, the great person you are. Congratulations on your return.
And Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, it's all been said, but it hasn't been said by me yet, so I wanna add my voice to the fact that I've watched your career for years in so many different capacities. There are a few people that have done so much in so many different ways and cared so much about the City of Los Angeles, and cared so much about your members as well as a great labor leader. I'm sorry to see you go. I think you should've done this for at least 60 years, but there are some in your family that might have disagreed, so we'll just be grateful that we had your wonderful leadership for the time that we have, and enjoy a great retirement.
Thank you, and now, the one and only Charlie Mims.
Well, thank you, President Luang. I'd like to thank Councilman Krikorian for all the kind things he said and the other folks in the council here that I've worked through through the years, some, you know, a shorter amount of time because some of you have recently come on the council and others for longer. But when I first came to work for the city in 23 years of age, I never thought I would be here five years, let alone 47 years, and the time has gone quickly. I've really enjoyed most of the projects I've worked on. I've been privileged to be able to work on construction projects in virtually every council district in the city, and when you look around, the diversity of the city and the types of areas and the people that are represented by the city council, it's just an amazing place. And we've been able to do some wonderful things, build new rec centers, you know, build new treatment facilities to help the environment, the pre-Olympic work at the airport to get ready for the 1984 Olympics. You know, I could go on further than Councilman Krikorian did, but the idea is that it's been a privilege to help transform the physical look of the city and the services that we're able to offer to the citizens here. And as a manager for over 30 years, I can tell you, we've got a lot of great employees in this city, and they have terrific ideas for doing work better, higher-quality work, doing it less expensively, and we just need the kind of leaders that recognize that and basically not only get out of their way, but help encourage them in implementing their ideas. We represent in the Los Angeles Professional Managers Association almost 600 executive-level and mid-level managers in the city, and I'm proud to say that our members represent that type of leadership in the city. They're the ones that can recognize employees with good ideas, help them to achieve those ideas, not only to better themselves as individual employees, but to make a better place for the citizens of Los Angeles, which I think is all of our purpose here. So it's been a great run. I've really enjoyed it. I probably wouldn't have retired, but for some strange reason, my wife says she wants to spend more time with me, and now that I've made the decision, I'm really getting used to the idea and looking forward to it. But I'm not gonna completely be gone. I'm gonna be working a little bit of part-time work for the union, so you might see me around here once in a while. Any rate, it's been a great time. I'm still a resident of Los Angeles, so you'll see me around in one function or another, and thank you very much for the opportunity to serve the people here.
So Charlie, on behalf of a grateful city, a grateful city council, a grateful city public workforce, and almost 4 million grateful Angelenos of the present who will benefit now and for many generations to come because of the work that you've done, I'm pleased to be able to present you with this resolution of thanks for your many, many years of outstanding service to our city. Congratulations, Charlie, on your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian.
Just one more comment. Mr. Jeff Whitmore, if you can come up, I'd like to introduce to you not the... You know, you got introduced earlier, I think, as part of the fraternity system. Jeff is Vice President of Los Angeles Professional Managers Association, so he's one of the future leaders in labor in the city and in management in the city that I think you'll all be happy to work with, so.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Get the shot, get the photo of Madam Clerk. Tell me about item number 12. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian.
Mr. President, item 12 is called special by Councilmember Parks, but I believe it's ready to be voted on.
All right, Mr. Parks, we got the matter resolved on 12, so let's open the roll on 12. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Next item.
Item 24, call special for cards.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is the BID in Little Tokyo. Little Tokyo is being ravaged by metro rail construction, so it needs a BID to fight back. We're on, our BID Business Improvement District, which my landlord has to pay into, is more interested in economic growth than in crime fighting. Number one thing that the BID should do is crime fighting. Most of the BID cops are retired LAPD officers. They do a good job, but they don't have enough of them because it's very much stacked at bureaucracy at the top.
Mr. City Attorney, there's no name on the...
Eric Previn.
On this.
Eric Previn. Sorry. Did you get that? I'm sorry, my apologies.
State your name and correct it next time. Thank you.
Absolutely, and I apologize. Yes, it's Eric Previn, a city resident from Council District 2, and also a candidate in the race for the Council District 2 seat. And these Business Improvement Districts are of interest. I noticed this one is for Little Tokyo, but it is worth noting that on this agenda today, there are 11 of them or something like that. I may have that number slightly wrong. And if Mr. Walsh is correct, which I was not able to fully determine, these are law enforcement characters. If that's what Business Improvement District means, we should say so kind of in a clear way. I may be a little behind the curve on knowing that that's what it means. It does say... It does say at item D, Mr. City Attorney, that the proposed improvements and activities are completely separate from the day-to-day operations of the city of Los Angeles. So, I mean, I struggle a little bit with that, but, but I don't, I don't disagree that the idea of individuals contributing to protect the public safety, if that's what this is, if that's what's going on, if this is not about sanitation and other kinds of maintenance issues, so be it. But if it's about empowering our landlords and people who own property to perform law enforcement, I would, I would, I would question that, I must say. I mean, there must be some way to make sure that with civilian oversight, that's in the interest of the public, not just the, the property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. I suggest you go to the city clerk's office to learn about them. They're very good things on the one of business improvement district. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. I will do that.
No speakers on the queue, no more cards. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Next item.
Tom, whatever you want me to call you. Fourth with on that one, please.
Fourth with for Mr. Weezer.
Presidente, Lavange.
Mucho gusto. Number 25, please call.
Item 25, call special for cards.
One called Eric Previn.
It's Eric Previn, a city resident from Studio City and a Council District 2 candidate as well. This item is in Mr. Englander's district, if I have it correct. Correct me if I'm wrong. It's the Porter Ranch area. And here we have an item which is being facilitated without any competitive bidding because it would be impracticable, apparently. My question for the city council, and I'll cede my time to Mr. Englander if he wants to respond, why is it impracticable to have any competitive bidding?
Thank you for your question.
I would like to cede my time to the council members or the city attorney to respond to the inquiry. You do not have to, as we both know.
Oh, good. Here's what I'll tell you. Thank you for your time. The city makes a recommendation, we move forward, it's a review by the city attorney, it's in the interest of the public. Your time is completed.
Well, no, actually I have a minute left, so I'll continue to ask.
You succeeded your time.
All right, Tom, that does not seem reasonable because this is a question about why is it, we're in a big public meeting. I think that the officials should be at least interested in responding to a resident who wants to know why it was not practicable to do competitive bidding. Because as I discussed with the auditor controller recently, the way we deal with surplus property or various things without competitive bidding is of, it's of a lot of interest to the residents because it benefits the folks who are getting those kinds of deals, but it doesn't benefit necessarily the public good. And we are aligned in the public good, so the question that's happening over there needs to be clarified at some point. If not in this meeting, during my last 20 seconds, so be it. But I look forward to a response, and thank you.
Okay, I tried to tell you, go to the clerk's office and ask the question there. The clerk's office is a very good office. Our clerks will be very knowledgeable. And so, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Next up.
Item 27, call special for cards.
Can't breathe. I can't breathe when I'm being bothered by Sergeant Amaru's, I can't breathe.
Can't breathe.
HollywoodHighlands.org, JWalshConfidential is number 27. It concerns economic development in the Byzantine Latino quarter property-based business improvement district. I wonder how many people out here know where the Byzantine district is. I happen to know because for many years I would teach at an elementary school that is in the Byzantine Latino Quarter District, although nobody in the district knew that they were Byzantine. And that, of course, is in the general area of Pico Boulevard and Crenshaw. It's an excellent area. You could eat off the floor, off the sidewalk there. It's kept in, in good condition. And I'm assuming that the business improvement district must have something to do with how well-run it is. So, remember, I praise you when you deserve it, HollywoodHighlands.org.
For the record, Senator Pico and Normandy in the great first district. Thank you. Juan Icala.
He begs, he begs to differ with you. That's not, that's not precisely. He says it's a different area. I think you're wrong, Mr. Lavange, but you will never admit it. Anyway, the Byzantine district has absolutely no interest for me because it's just one more stupid district in a stupid city. You know what I mean? We're all divided anyway. Why can't we all unite and fight City Hall together? Because City Hall is screwing everybody up.
He is not talking about this item.
Well, I'm going to go to the Byzantine district and do a survey to see if you are doing a good job. I don't think so. I don't think so. You're screwing up everywhere I go. I ride the whole city and I don't even know what districts I'm running through, but I'm running through every district and they all suck.
He, he is not talking about.
All right, you're not talking twice, by the, that completes your comments. The Pico Boulevard, straight out of downtown. That completes it. No other speakers on the queue. And by the way, those who run that business district are doing an excellent job and the work that's being done there for the tree maintenance and the street cleaning. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
15 ayes. Next item.
Item 30, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh.
I live in East Hollywood unless you want to contradict me, Mr. Lavange, because I live east of Vine Street and several blocks east of Vine Street. Again, the problem, the only problem with the BID is it's hard to find them. There's so few of them. But I know that in my neighborhood, I went to the LAPD at Yucca and Argyle and asked them to get rid of the drug dealers in my neighborhood infesting the building. They didn't do one damn thing. I went to the Business Improvement District cops and they got them flushed out, this is several years ago, although the problem continues, they got them flushed out in about a day because they went to the LAPD. So, I think if you see a BID cop, ask him to do something for you because you're a thousand times more likely to get it done by a BID cop than an LAPD. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. That completes the matter. Madam Clerk, we're going to open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
Item 35, call special for cards.
John Walsh.
Yes, there are, although you're not going to find too many stories about it in the media, particularly you're not going to find it in the LA Times, there are very dangerous pipelines with oil running underneath the, the city of Los Angeles. Where they are, well, maybe right where you live, maybe where you live. You don't know, do you? And when we had the Northridge earthquake, if you look buried in the stories, one of the pipelines burst all over the street. So much happened during the Northridge earthquake, many people didn't know. Now, those pipelines are many years later. The oil companies do not repair them, they do not maintain them. The city doesn't have to do it because it's not water. And I'm telling you, it's just a matter of time before one of them rupture and it might even happen where all you white people live on the West Side.
I have no other cards. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
15 ayes. Next item.
Item 36, call special for cards.
Eric Previn.
Yes, City Councilman Chairman Lavange or President Lavange. It is Eric Previn, a city resident from Studio City and also a candidate in the second council district race. This is a, a matter that deals with providing some rental car companies license at the Ontario Airport, if I've got it correct. And among them is Enterprise Rent-A-Car. And Enterprise is a good example. It's the largest rental car company in the world, for the record. And they employ Englander, Knobby and Allen to handle multiple jurisdictions. What they do is, for example, they paid Mr. Knobby or the firm 17,000 to lobby the MTA in the second quarter of 2014. But a glance at the last few years reveals that Enterprise has poured 258,000 into the, that lobbyist firm for their work lobbying at Metro. But during the same period, Enterprise also poured $473,000 into the lobbyist firm to lobby the city of Los Angeles. Now, with Mr. Garcetti and councilmembers Bonin and Mr. Krikorian.
That completes your time, Mr. Previn. That completes your time.
Highly efficient situation. Now, was that one minute or two?
No, that was two minutes.
Wow.
One minute, one minute, one minute.
Well, but.
No, you, no, because you were out of time.
You used up your five minutes on the previous, on that and the previous items.
Don't disrupt the meeting, Mr. Previn. And if you, we know your name, just state it. You don't have to tell us all about what you want to try to do, just articulate your vision. Thank you. No other cards on this item? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
15 ayes. I have no cards on 37. I just found a card on 37. Rudy Savornich? Gary McDonald?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues. It is always nice to be back here in the council chambers. It is always nice to see every one of you. Rudy Savornich Jr., President Pro Tem, Emeritus of the Los Angeles City Council, representing Midway Car Rental to here today. We do not interpose any objection with this item, item going forward today, but we wanted to bring this to the council's attention. The last time the concessions for rental cars at LAX were considered in an open competitive process is the year after I left. I've been gone 14 years. This is part one of a two-part process. There are some companies that are businesses, as our client Midway, which are Los Angeles City businesses, that have not been able to bid or to be allowed to operate onsite at the airport as concessioners for the last 14 years. We have continued the contracts since the year after I left. This is part one of a two-part process. Today, we ask that you do approve this, but coming forth from you from the Board of Airport Commissioners and their staff is working very hard on this, is the second part of this program called the Full Service Concessioners. The airport is opening up a public process to allow any other company that may want to bid on doing rental cars on airport by summer. And so, while we are approving these today as part of the implementation of the consolidated rental car facility that we are going to be opening up at LAX in the near future, hopefully in the next half a dozen years, this is the first part of that. The second part of it is opening up an open, fair and transparent process to let those who have not been able to participate into the system. So, this can go forward today. Part two will be coming and wanted to bring it to your attention.
All right, your time has expired, but not your service. Thank you, Mr. Savornich. Mr. McDonald.
Yes, good morning. My name is Gary McDonald. I'm with Midway Car Rental. We're a Los Angeles company, Los Angeles-based company, and we've been in business in Los Angeles for 40 years. We have 370 employees, all residents of Los Angeles and Los Angeles County. And as Mr. Savornich indicated, we have not been able to participate in the bidding process of LAX for 14 years. And also, as Mr. Savornich indicated, we don't want to interrupt the process of this, of this going forward. We are fine with this going forward. However, we want to be on record that the second part of this that has been assured to us would, will come forth where we will have an opportunity to be a full-service concessionaire as the airport management has indicated to us. We expect that to be in the next 30 or 60 days and we're very, very hopeful that that will happen and we just, as I say, we just want to be on record to say that we are anxious for that to happen and we wouldn't want this to, this to pass and not have that opportunity going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That completes the cards. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
You want to say hello, William? It's very special here.
Thank you to everybody here at Los Angeles City Council. My name is William Talashay. I am the Director of Construction and a family member of a company called Specialty Restaurants Corporation. We're a proud business company that has done business in the city of Los Angeles for probably close to about 52, 53 years. We're here today and with my great appreciation from my family, especially to all of the community supporters in the city of Los Angeles, all the people on the West Side around Los Angeles International Airport, we're very, very grateful and thankful that we now have the extension of our lease at the beautiful Proud Bird Restaurant right next to LAX. We very, very much want to make sure that everybody in this room, especially all the people who are the community supporters, are, are very aware that without their support and without the work that they did, especially the work of my brother, John Talashay, it would have been very difficult for us to achieve this lease. But again, I wanted to say thank you very much on behalf of my family. Thank you also to Rudy for all of your help in getting us there. And again, to all of you, thank you for letting us stay and to do business in your great city.
Thank you very much. And Rudy Savornich, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, there are not many an occasion when you see me here at the council. But when I do arrive, I would hope it would be something significant. Today, with your vote, we are going to be approving, hopefully, a new 20-year lease for the Proud Bird Restaurant. The Proud Bird is one of the icons of the city of Los Angeles. It memorializes and celebrates the aviation history of our city. This has been a two-year path to this day. And so, today, on behalf of the family of the Proud Bird, the Talashay family, to Councilman Bonin, whose district this restaurant resides, to the Board of Airport Commissioners, their hard-working staff, and in advance to all of you, thank you for allowing, as my former colleague and Commissioner Jackie Goldberg of Lawa says, "Today with your vote, the Proud Bird lives." Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues.
And they, Juan Icala.
I don't know, all this red tape just to have a restaurant so you can do business? And you're telling me you have a business-friendly city? And thank you for letting me have a lease? Thank you. You know, it's ridiculous. You can't do. You can't do business in LA. You really can't. I tried to do business before, and you even kicked the guys that are selling sodas and candy and stuff on the streets. You kicked their ass really royally. All they're trying to do is to make an honest living, and you send the cops to get them. The cops are not here to penalize people that are doing...
He is not talking about this item.
Talk on this issue.
Yeah, doing a, they're trying to make an honest living. And yet, all the white-collar crime goes unnoticed. When you catch one of those white-collar criminals, you send them to...
He is not talking about this item.
Very well. Thank you, Juan. Have a good afternoon. Madam Clerk, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise briefly to say something about this. Mr. Talashay?
Mr. Talashay, attention.
I just wanted to rise and thank you for doing business in the city of Los Angeles, to you and your family for all these years, to thank you for your considerable patience with the bureaucracy in making this happen. The FAA, as we know, was a huge pain in the butt on this, and I really want to thank the mayor's office and some of the folks at Lawa who helped make this happen. I think it's particularly appropriate that we take this action today at the beginning of African-American History Month, because your place is an iconic institution for the African-American community. You have probably hosted more wedding receptions for African-American couples than almost anything else in the city of Los Angeles. So, it's too long in coming, but well-timed today. Thank you.
Thank you. So, before we vote on it, I want to add my remarks to Mr. Bonin and the great job you and your staff did. It was a threatened building. This was a threatened historic landmark, and we want to say that Michael Bonin stood up, and this is now forever going to be in the place at hearts of ours. Mr. Price, I see you just punched your...
I certainly support this agreement, and am very happy that the exhibit of the Tuskegee Airman, I understand is going to be expanded. That is a significant historical treasure that really benefits the entire community, and so we appreciate that additional level of support, of involvement, of engagement. And I hope we can find a way to make that exhibit area more visible and more available to the broader public, at least to our schoolkids who just need to know about the history of our country in a way that's very visual and very exciting, as those planes represent. So, congratulations. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. And before we also vote on this, Mr. Corret.
I just wanted to say, there are a few great landmarks in this city. Unfortunately, one of our historic mistakes is we let them get torn down. We miss opportunities like this. In this case, I think the community and everyone came together, and we're very fortunate to save one of our iconic places. And I want to thank everyone on council everywhere else that made this happen. This is a great day because of this in the city of Los Angeles.
I just want to also add, too, we should remember that there was a firefighter who lost his life there. Firefighter Purnell had a unfortunate fire several years ago. But now, this great institution, all these monuments, the Tuskegee Airman display, all of it, Mr. Bonin, this is a big home run for all the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All forthwith on these items concerning Los Angeles International Airport, all forthwith. Next item.
Twenty-three, called special by Councilmember Krikorian, and a mini-motion twenty-three A has been circulated.
Thank you. Mr. Krikorian, thank you for your kindness.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, we all recognize that Los Angeles is known throughout the world as the mural capital of the world. And we have devoted considerable efforts to ensuring that we can maintain that title. In this budget year alone, this council set aside one-point-seven-five million dollars for restoring murals, and we just recently passed a very important historic mural ordinance. The city is home to over a thousand murals that are listed with the Department of Cultural Affairs, and a hundred-and-fifty-two of those have been designated as historically and culturally significant. And yet, in each of our districts throughout the city, we see this happening to our historic murals, our important public art. This public art is drowning in a sea of graffiti. Not art, graffiti vandalism, that's destroying the work that muralists have done throughout our city. And vandals target murals intentionally, precisely because they know how difficult it is to paint that graffiti out. We can't just simply whitewash it like we can on a plain wall. We have to restore the mural underlying it. And because of that, it's much more expensive to the city, it takes much longer, and so the tags stay up longer. And that's, of course, what the vandals want to achieve. So, removing this blight and preserving our city's important artistic, historical artistic resource is exceptionally important. That's why the motion that's before you today will help to protect our murals by increasing the reward that's available for people who report graffiti vandals, and also increasing the criminal penalty. We're asking the city attorney to come back to us with both of those objectives. Right now, the municipal code allows for a criminal penalty of only a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine for a first offense. That should be significantly higher when the graffiti affects a mural that ends up costing the city tens of thousands of dollars to try to restore. So, the important part of this motion is to encourage public engagement by reporting these crimes, and then to ensure that we have a stronger enforcement by increasing the penalty. So, with that, members, I'd like to ask for your aye vote on this. And I'd also like to remind the public that right now, even under current law, there is a reward available for those who report graffiti vandals. You can go to anti-graffiti.lacity.org, or you can simply call 311 and report these crimes in progress and seek a reward that way. So, with that, members, I'd ask for your aye vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sidio, please. Mr. Sidio.
Thank you for your leadership on this matter. You are absolutely correct. The murals are part of what it is to be in Los Angeles. They are incredible assets. As you know, on the east side of the city, in Borough Heights, in Lincoln Heights, in Highland Park, throughout the northeast, we have incredible murals, many of them emerged in the sixties and seventies. They were part of the Chicano movement and part of the Renaissance that emerged. They emulated the great Mexican muralists, Ciequeros Rivera, Orozco, Tamaio, Calo. And so, they were part of that era and are now part of the cultural fabric of this city. We should do all that we can to preserve them. Whenever they are tagged and graffiti's placed on them, they go from being beauty to blight. And we must do all that we can to protect them from that. And so I encourage all my colleagues to vote for this. And I also encourage us to think about how we amplify this, that graffiti on a mural is important to us, as is dumping. And we should not tolerate either one. This is unacceptable. It's intolerable. But we must create a culture, we must create an ethic, we must create a behavior in this city that says this type of conduct is unacceptable, and that we, as a community, as a city, will respond and protect our communities. And so for that, I ask, encourage your support for this proposal, and thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for your leadership on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Sidio. Really appreciate it. And please note that our sister city of Mexico City, our city Los Angeles itself, our sister city of Berlin, are the mural capitals of the world, and unless we protect this heritage, it's lost. It is so important. And I know, I'm looking for Harry Eto'o to make sure he notes this, so we step it up with our community outreach with LAPD liaison officer Eto'o. Thank you. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. Thank you. Forthwith on that matter. Next item.
Item forty-seven, called special by Councilmember Parks, send for cards.
Let me do the cards first. Chris Y? Chris Y? Chris Y? Mr. Herman?
Mr. Speaker, I did fill out my card as Rosa Parks, civil rights activist, such as myself. But communication for sidewalk repairs and programs has been an awful issue by the city of Los Angeles, an offensive issue towards people of disability, and more so the taxpayers who pay for improvement, for the safety and health of our welfare from slip-and-fall incidents that Mr. Krikorian cares the hell of nothing about, because as I speak about it, he cares less. He hasn't even brought up enough money for his reelection. Going off topic and back to topic now, this is the real issue, that since nineteen-seventy-three, based on federal and state ruling, the city of Los Angeles has denied the American Disability Acts towards people that are elderly, people who are affected by a disability, such as a fine young woman sitting here in the pool...
Please speak to the council, sir.
Sidewalks improvement program is horrible. It's a failure and a destruction by this council, and I have to blame, more so Mr. Weezer, who hasn't improved the sidewalks and streets in our area. And although you are running for reelection, I find it offensive that you come up here and promote beautiful occasions for the improvement and the opportunity for a public comment. But now that the DOJ and the Transportation Authority are on the move to get you to abide by the laws under Barton versus Sacramento, we are going to have improvements, not because of Mr. Krikorian or Mr. Weezer, but because we, the people, waive our rights under the sovereignty of the Brown Act to act upon these actions of proper sidewalks and streets. Thank you.
Juan, I call her.
I've been advised to not wear these hats so the cameraman doesn't put us so far away that you can barely see us, but, see?
Speak to the issue. Speak to the issue.
Oh, yeah, the issue is sidewalks. They all suck. All your sidewalks suck. And just around city hall, not too far away, there are some sidewalks that don't even have a ramp for the disabled people. So, your city seems to have inspectors that are totally blind. And just go a few blocks down the way, there isn't even a sidewalk over there. It's dirt. And when it rains, nobody can go on the sidewalk. People have to go and risk their lives walking on the street, because city hall sucks. They don't know what to do, when to do it, how to do it.
All right, that completes public comment. I'd like the city engineer to sit at the table. Thank you very much, Mr. City Engineer. Sit at the table. We have a number of council members who want to speak. First, I'm going to call on Councilmember Parks.
Thank you very much. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Your report answered many of our questions this morning, because I didn't get that before the date. But let me just go back and, to Mr. Santana, this is, as you know, been a lingering issue for the city for a long time. All we would like in the Eighth District, if we can get the research that shows what city facilities are going to be a priority in this program. And we really are interested in the fact that if you, on your front page of your, the committee report says we're going to have contractors, we'd like for you to really strongly move towards Lonnie, who is already in the midst of addressing several hundred thousand dollars with the sidewalks in the Eighth District. And from our experience, getting an amended contract with, through the city attorney, is half the time than getting a new contract. Not saying they were pleased with that half-time, but the issue is, is that it is far less time. And we believe that using Lonnie gets us somewhere in the neighborhood of about a fifty percent savings on what we've done. And so we've just asked you on those issues, but we really would like to see what sidewalks around city facilities, I know you've identified around the parks, but other city facilities, so we could let the community know that help is coming in the district. But Lonnie would be a lifesaver for us. So, those are the two.
Thank you, sir. The, what's before you actually directs that to occur. So, we will be identifying those sidewalks that will be repaired around city facilities. We will also be repairing sidewalks that are, have been identified by individuals who have called the Office on Disability, the Department of Disabilities, who are currently on a waiting list. And the third area is in relation to wrecking parks, as you discussed. Our, the direction is to use existing contractors, both in the Office of Beautification and in any other form that the city currently has. And it's my understanding that Lonnie currently does have a contract with the city, so we'll be able to utilize them to ensure that these dollars are spent.
Okay. For us, and again, we also check city clerk, because I think our most recent contracts have been with the city clerk, city attorney. We just would like amended and moved forward, because it is something in which I think the community's been waiting for, and the faster we can let them know it's going to happen, I think the better.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the chairman of the Finance Committee, who's been leading the effort on this, Mr. Krikorian, please give us your overview from the start.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's been my pleasure to work with Mr. Buscaino, our great chair of the Public Works Committee, in beginning to develop a comprehensive policy and plan for sidewalk repair, for the first time in decades in this city. One of the speakers mentioned that in the nineteen-seventies, the city was doing some sidewalk repair, thanks to some public funding that we had gotten from the federal government in the nineteen-seventies. And within the first two years of that program, the city was three years behind schedule. And that's how much of a demand there was for service at that time. Quickly, the federal government cut off that funding, and the city was left with the dilemma that it now faces of no funding for sidewalk repair, and yet an increasing demand for the repair of this aging infrastructure that's so important to so many of our residents. So, this effort that's been going on now is intended to start the process of prioritizing the first tasks to be completed in a multi-year, long-term commitment that this city will make to fixing all of the sidewalks within the city of Los Angeles. Today, what's before you is a commitment of twenty-seven million dollars that's previously been budgeted. This approves the side, this motion will approve the sidewalk repair allocation plan that's recommended in your report. It will approve the positions necessary to begin that work, and it will ask our proprietary departments in the rest of the city to continue to work on identifying the areas adjacent to public facilities that are most in need of sidewalk repair. And then beyond that, also in our residential neighborhoods, where the worst problems currently exist that impact our elderly and our disabled community. So, this is an important step forward, but it's only a step. And we will have to continue to be committed to this process for decades to come, to once and for all finally invest in a sidewalk infrastructure system that works for all Angelinos. So, I just want to thank especially Mr. Buscaino, all of the members of the Budget and Finance Committee who've worked on this, and the, our staffs who've worked collaboratively... who've worked collaboratively with the CIO, and Mr. Moore, and many others in the city staff to begin grappling with the very complex and difficult policy questions that need to be resolved to have an effective solution for a very, very long-term, seemingly intractable problem that we're finally beginning to see the light at the end of the tunnel on. So I ask for your aye vote.
Mr. Joe Buscaino, the Fiftieth District, of the Powerful Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Krikorian, it's also great to work alongside you and your team on making every effort we can to fix our failing infrastructure, including our sidewalks. Forty percent of our sidewalks are failing. Nearly four thousand miles of sidewalks in the city of L.A. are crumbling. And the most difficult thing that I had to deal with coming from the LAPD to city council was the slow pace of government. At the Los Angeles Police Department, I was used to addressing urgent problems, responding code-three lights and siren. But it's been more than little frustrating that this week marks three years that I've been on this council and Chair of Public Works Committee, and still we don't have a long-term, comprehensive sidewalk repair policy. We all want our sidewalks better. We all want to improve our infrastructure. No one is happy with the status quo. But an unresolved question of public policy here that we've been grappling for forty years is whether the adjoining property owner or the taxpayer is responsible for repair. That question has been further complicated by the class action lawsuit that we've been dealing with here since two thousand and ten, the Willis versus the City of Los Angeles, that alleges the city is violating the American Disabilities Act by not ensuring mobility for all residents, including the disabled, to our sidewalks. Today's report from the Budget and Finance Committee moves forward that where there's no disagreement, that the city of Los Angeles is responsible for repairing adjacent sidewalks, sidewalks adjacent to city-owned public facilities. Thanks to the tireless efforts and hard work of Miguel Santana at CIO's office, Jim Clark at the city attorney's office, we are closer than we've ever been in reaching a settlement in the Willis case and bringing forward long-term, sustainable sidewalk repair policy. Now neither of those matters are before this council today, but I can assure you, Mr. Krikorian and I can assure you that we will have a thorough discussion and provide ample opportunity for public input in the coming weeks through a joint Public Works and Budget and Finance Committee meetings that these matters move forward. Today's action is a first step toward correcting the problems created forty years ago when, that's when I was born, by the way, when this city council took on new service without considering how to pay for it, as Mr. Krikorian alluded to. Let's move forward, colleagues. Let's show good faith and lead by example by fixing sidewalks next to city property and public facilities and not delay one more day. Thank you.
Mr. Felipe Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. And let me apologize in advance. This is one of those times where you wish you're on every single city committee so that you can sort of say your two cents. I think it's very clear in the report here that it says city facilities. Mr. Krikorian, you said public facilities. Let me tell you that sixty percent of the calls that we get in my district office asking for sidewalk repair are for those areas near schools. So parent centers, teachers, management at these school sites often tell us, what can you do? Now, truth be told, a lot of the off-site improvements that should have been done when the schools were constructed weren't done. But understanding that I think some of our most vulnerable constituencies are parents and children making their way to school. In parts of my district, I've got no sidewalks on either side of a street, or you'll have worse ramps and no sidewalks. So I'm wondering if there isn't a way to make a friendly amendment here to sort of open up, as Mr. Krikorian said, city facilities to public facilities. I understand that there isn't nearly enough money to address all that we need to address. But if there's a way to include our routes to schools in addition to the city facilities, I think we'd really be leveraging the investment to the max.
I'm friendly to that. Are you friendly to that?
If I may speak to that, please, Mr. President. Mr. Fuentes, I think the issue of routes to schools is actually incorporated already in the language that we have because of the broader language that are added in these recommendations. The sidewalks that are adjacent to schools are the clear responsibility of the LAUSD to repair. So the reason that this focused on city facilities is because, as Mr. Buscaino pointed out, there can be no question about the legal liability of the city to repair the sidewalks next to its own facilities, number one. And number two, because those are the facilities that our constituents need to have the most ready access to because they're the facilities that belong to them. The schools present the identical issues with the exception that it is clearly not the city's responsibility to repair those sidewalks. It is the responsibility of the LAUSD. So to incorporate those repairs into this would essentially be a transfer of the taxpayers' money from the city budget to the budget of the LAUSD.
So that I'm clear, then. So the sidewalks along the perimeter of a school, their responsibility. Across the street, to connect that responsibility to the cities, that in the broader definition, or rather, in the finer definition, is captured?
Mr. Santana.
And again, my apologies for, because I'm not on the committee. I got the report this morning. All I've got is the language that's before me. And I absolutely agree with you. Everything on the perimeter of a school site, their responsibility, we bring it to their attention, just like we do trees and this sort of thing. But it's between that perimeter and the rest of the sort of streets that people are having a tough time, at least in the Seventh Council District, to get to school. And this is one of those items that I think that, you know, I've been educated a great deal in terms of whose liability is and whose it isn't. But if we're gonna make the expenditure, I think we need to leverage it to make sure that families are able to get to school sites, especially when and if it will rain next. It's a real problem in the Seventh.
And if I may, before Mr. Santana speaks, keep in mind that What's Before Us today is the first cut at the apple here. So all of the other issues of longer-term plans for residential neighborhoods and commercial corridors and all of those sorts of things will be encompassed in the longer-term commitment. But the very first use of this initial twenty-seven million dollars is focused on those areas where there can be no dispute. Now, in addition to the city facilities, these recommendations broaden it to include residential areas based on complaints from the public, and particularly the disabled public. And I'll turn to Mr. Santana to see whether that might also encompass safe routes to schools and some other areas that I share Mr. Fuentes's concern, that whether or not there is a complaint from the public about that, if we have already devoted resources of the city to ensure safe routes to school, if we've received federal funding that we use for safe routes to school grants, shouldn't those also be encompassed within the prioritization of the initial expenditures?
And yes, that is correct. So there's two major tests here. One is it around a city facility? Or two, is it in a residential neighborhood? We'll be using the complaints that we received through the Office on Disability as a starting point, but that will not be the only measure. So the plan is to work with every council office to prioritize which sidewalks that meet those two tests, city facilities and residential neighborhoods. And as Mr. Krikorian indicated, this is a beginning of a much larger program. There are a number of larger policy issues that your council will have to consider with public input to address the long-term sustainability of our sidewalk.
And, Mr. Labonge, thank you for being so gracious with extending my time a little bit. I will just say that I think in that first bite of the apple, it's such a perfect, it's apropos here for the school, is that we should figure out how to have our thumb on the scale as it relates to those residential areas near schools. And the last thing that I wanted to ask you all about is the locations where we have metro stops. In my area, for example, I've got metro stops, and I've got folks who don't have clear and easy access. In fact, right at Roxford, San Fernando Road, there's a gentleman who, rain or shine, uses the street within his wheelchair to get from one of those stops to an area that actually does have a ramp and a sidewalk. Understanding that's part of a larger plan, I'm eager to sort of understand how we roll all that out. And I wanna thank Mr. Parks for educating me on sort of where the liability is and where it isn't. But this is one of those where I think we have to sort that out after the fact. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to note, the apple that you spoke of in the schools, the same farmers, the people pay the same taxes, whether they're LA Unified, that's the farmer, or we're the city. It's the same dollar. So I think we really should look at that straight because if you could spend it twice. That's my point. And I'm LA High, Marshall High, and now I wanna call on Roosevelt High after I spoke with San Fernando High and Cleveland High. And now that I've confused you all, let me introduce Mr. Sadio.
Mr. Labonge, you're all Northern League. Mr. Santana, thank you. For your leadership on this matter, we have no less than a legal obligation, but I would also argue more obligation. Clearly, for children, seniors, and the disabled, we can do no less at city facilities. Our challenge is that the public wants us to do more and gives us less. And so for that, we must make sure that we have the right strategy, the right efficiencies, and the right collaborations. And so Mr. Fuentes raises an excellent point, as does Mr. Labonge. The public doesn't distinguish. They say we pay taxes, and I don't have a safe route to school. And so we must do all that we can. Let me suggest that we amplify our efforts by collaborating and looking for partners. Ms. Martinez served on the LAUSD board. Mr. Weezer served on that body as well. We should look to ways to collaborate and pull the aggregate of resources of the district, of the state, of the county, of the city, to see if we can't build a coalition for safe sidewalks, a coalition for safe transit, a coalition for safety for those who are the most vulnerable, and yet fundamentally have a right. And we know, and I know, my life experience has taught me, that when people are disabled and there's a broken sidewalk, they're homebound. And we're denying them their fundamental constitutional rights. And so we should look, I applaud our efforts to be strategic. I agree with our priorities. We should do no less. But we should also look to see if we can't, with your leadership and the leadership of this body and the mayor, collaborate with our government partners on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too am proud we're finally moving forward on this. And I think you may have answered the question, but how are we gonna prioritize? What's gonna be done? Are you coming up with a list? You're gonna run it by the council office? Should the council office be giving you lists of addresses? Or what's the process gonna be for getting work assigned and then done?
So there's two questions I'll be asked. Is it around a city facility? Is a sidewalk in a residential community? Obviously, these funds are at the beginning of a much larger program. This action directs that we work with each council office to prioritize which sidewalks in relation to those two areas. As part of the report, there's actually a list of sidewalks that are managed by wrecking parks to ensure that all of our recreational facilities and parks are accessible to the public. But that's just the beginning. So the departments are instructed and have been identifying sidewalks around city facilities. It is our objective to ensure that every single city facility is accessible to the public. But in terms of how that's prioritized, we'll be working with each office.
Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian, you're up. You're complete on that? Okay, that's it. So members, I just wanted to add, thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for your work last night and every day on this here. I just wanted, in the report, Mr. CIO, are you looking to buy a concrete plant? Because I think it's real important. You have great asphalt plants. Look at that as a possibility on that. Also, LA Unified. When I went to LA Unified, I went to Saturday Skills class. Could we have a joint use with LA Unified Saturday Skills class? The trades, LA Trade Tech, teach young people this opportunity. It's gonna take a long time. And also consult with the State Department of Disability, what zip code has the highest number of people who have this need? And then I think that's where we should serve first, where the more people are on wheelchairs, they should have that service. And I see our Board of Public Works here. And I think the mayor should appoint one of those five members as the king or queen of sidewalks and just go for it, because this is taking too long. I thank you, Mr. City Engineer, John Reamer from Contract Administration. A great report. Let's move forward. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. Next item.
Item one, call special for cards.
John Walsh. Pass. Mr. Buscaino.
Mr. President, on item one, I ask that we continue this for two weeks. We, I have staff meeting with the individual here, the property owner, to get some more information. Item one, if we can continue for two weeks, please.
All right, since we're gonna continue it for two weeks, I'm gonna note these cards. Mr. Herman, Mr. Arcala. At that time, Wayne Spindler, when you return. It's continued.
And for the record, Mr. President, that's continued to February seventeenth.
There are no speakers at this time. You're noted, filed. We're continuing the matter. Continue the matter.
Mr. President, I ask that we reconsider council file number fourteen dash oh-one-six-oh dash five-four-two-eight from January the thirtieth of this year to remove the late fees and interest totaling three thousand four hundred and four dollars, leaving an amount do-noing of nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Okay, let's open the roll for reconsideration. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
The matters before us, on the recommendation, that motion has been circulated. And it's a verbal circulated motion. Thank you, Ms. Patrice. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. Next item.
Item thirteen, call special for cards. Call special by Councilmember Buscaino.
Mr. Buscaino, I have one card, Wayne Spindler. Item thirteen.
Okay, we have the Import-Export Bank.
Excuse me, Mr. Spindler. I was informed by the clerk that the public hearing has been held. So thank you for your efforts. We're gonna hold this item till Mr. Buscaino returns to the chamber. Next item.
Item twenty-one, call special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks. Thank you. Could I have staff come up, please?
Good morning. I just had a couple of questions. It seems as though the last time, or maybe the first time, this came before council, the department said that it would cost little or no money in anything that was viewed as extra responsibility that absorb in their current workforce. And today, you're asking us for two-point-four million dollars. What's changed on that?
Good morning, Alex Hello, Assistant General Manager for sanitation. Your correct, Councilman, when we came forty years ago Your correct councilman, when we came four years ago to this chamber, we asked for unfreeze of existing positions to help launch the franchise program. At that time, we only needed to basically unfreeze existing positions we had. The council approved those unfreezes for us, and our staff have been working very hard on drafting an ordinance which was approved. We worked on the RFP. We also worked on the implementation plan, as well as we began the evaluation. We have released an RFP. On October of 2014, we received 15 proposals, and our staff are currently evaluating.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out, when did you decide you needed these personnel when we were told something different when you brought it before us?
I mean, what we wanted at the initial time was staff to launch the program. We have hired a consultant who have done the franchise program in other cities, and so they prepared an implementation plan or staffing plan. So, the report that you see today was really prepared by a private company who have done these franchises. It's also important to note that we are launching the largest franchise in the country. We're looking about $2.5 to $3 billion.
But we knew that when you created the proposal, right?
When we came here, we did not have the proposal at the time. We were just laying down the foundation.
But when you came and asked us to approve the franchise, you knew how many people it involved, you knew how big the franchise would be, and when your department was asked specifically what the cost of the city, the answer very specifically was, it would be minimal or no cost, and any duties would be absorbed with existing staff. And that's what I'm trying to figure out. When did we find out that wasn't true?
That's not actually how we characterized it at the time. What was...
Then I must have a hearing impaired, then.
No. It's just at that time, we... Nobody has done a program this magnitude anywhere in the country. And so, we wanted to start the foundation for the program, and that's why we asked for unfreeze in existing positions.
Alright. Well, what I recall is something different, and I'm concerned that we've jumped from cost neutral to we'll handle these extra duties to $2.4 million annually. And although it doesn't come out of the general fund, it does come out of special funds that could be used elsewhere. And so, I'm just concerned at how we got to that when we were told something different from the beginning. The other thing I was wondering, and maybe the CIO can answer this. One quick question. Have we made any determination? Because we've been called by a number of small mom-and-pop haulers that believe they will now be out of business. Have we made any assessment of what the impact of loss of their grocery seat tax are going to be on our general fund?
Councilman Parks and David Toronto with the Office of CIO. No, we have not made that assessment.
Do we have any idea how many?
At this point, we do not know how many would eventually go out of business, or what the impact would be. If you would like to determine that, we could work with you to...
Okay. Could you do that for us?
Do a study through our Office of Economic Analysis, but we probably would need some money in our contractual services.
The thing is, is that, could you start off with Office of Finance and see if we could determine how many haulers that are the mom-and-pop that are affected in doing business? They may not go out of business, but they will not be able to do business in the city. So, if we can start with Office of Finance before we start seeking money for outside, maybe that would be helpful.
Sure, and we can get back to you offline.
But I just don't understand how we did it, and I just am concerned that it looks like bait and switch. It's not going to cost, now it is going to cost, and then tell us all about how big the program is. We knew that from the beginning. And so, I just am concerned that we now have a cost ongoing that we were not told about.
Seeing that there are no other speakers on the queue, we open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes, one no.
Thank you. Proceed. Well, one no, thirteen eyes. Proceed. Say hello, Enrique, for me. Thank you. Next item.
Item 43, call special for cards.
Mr. Herman.
I want to give a special thanks to Kevin James and his attorneys for the community beautification efforts to improve our sidewalk and streets. Just brought out here in CD 14. You heard the discussion that Mr. Kukarian and Mr. Fuentes described as a improvement condition for our public sidewalks and streets? Well, the beautification program and the efforts of our council district man, Mr. Jose Weezer, who can't represent us in his seat, it's obvious that the monies should not be allocated solely to the improvements and not in the conditions and operations for community beautifications in any and all communities, because, again, the allocations of beautification efforts to improve our sidewalk and streets has a failure rate, a failure problem, and a discouraging problem throughout the city of Los Angeles. So how can we recommend then and then and suggest that the funding for community beautification efforts are improving our community when they're not? I could only suggest that not re-electing Jose Weezer, so that the fundings and the appropriations that are allocated for public works to take action in our community will benefit, such as Hazard Park in CD 14. As you all know, the violations of ADA compliance has been a long, damn-gone, gone, wrong problem, and I hope to see it improved. Thank you.
Juan Arcola. You're out of time. Your card will be filed, Juan. Thank you.
So it's good. Again, the effort to beautify CD 14, the hard work of Jose Weezer. Today, again, to do this, the money has to be stolen from one account and given to another. So, last time I was here, they stole money from Kevin James's bureau and gave it to CD 14. Thank you. I appreciate that. But now, we have to get the money back to Kevin and the Board of Public Works. So, we're going to steal $5,720 from the Central Los Angeles Recycling and Transfer Station Community Amenities Trust Fund, number 47S14. Nobody really knows what this is. I don't think it exists. So, it's probably some sort of fictional bookkeeping issue. But in any event, it's only $5,720. I'm calling on the Board of Public Works to make that tenfold. Make it $57,200. Give it to Jose Weezer and CD 14, and clean the blight. You drive through there, tagging is being removed, sidewalks are being repaired. It's a tough election year. So, we need to keep the effort going alive, because the campaign donors are running Gloria Jabba the Hutt Molina for that seat, and we don't want that. So, $5,700 is nothing. That's, in contractor terms, about seven square feet of space on a sidewalk. So, if you do it tenfold, you can take a whole sidewalk and repair it. Thank you.
That completes our cards. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Next item. Yes.
We sent 43, 39, and 21 forthwith.
Absolutely, absolutely. Fourthwith. Next item.
Item 45, call special for cards.
I'll read the cards. You tell me if they're out of time. John Walsh. John Walsh, you have one minute left. Mr. Collet, note your card. You're out of time.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. As even Mr. Buscagno has said, LA is the hit-and-run capital of the world, and also has more per square mile liquor licenses than any city other than Las Vegas, which is a causal connection. Here, we're dealing with Thomas Price hit-and-run. Now, in the history of hit-and-run deaths, only one reward has ever been collected, and that was when a white man ran over another white man near Century City. In fact, if the victim is African-American or Hispanic, and you are white, don't worry. You have permission of this all-white jury to kill anybody you want, any minority you want on the... And as you know, you like to interrupt me and contradict me.
Mr. Herman.
You signed my card up as Rosa Parks, civil rights activist. But, as all you know, that the reward offer for someone's death is no concern to our council, as you see many empty seats in here this morning. A $50,000 reward for the apprehension, for snitches who get stitches? Who gives a? Right? They're just death. But yet, we allow our politicians to offer from the taxpayers $50,000 rewards. And yet, as Mr. Kukarian brought out, protecting murals for $250 penalty reward, that's a damn shame in Los Angeles. Thank you for nothing, Mr. Kukarian, because I will not re-elect you, and you have no support in District 2.
He is not talking about the sign.
I'm going back on topic, Mr. James.
Alright, keep on the topic.
With hit-and-runs, that you don't give a rat's ass about the death of people in the city of Los Angeles.
Alright, completes the comment. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, at this time, I believe your council will take a general public
Good afternoon. My name is Irene Lewis. I am the Director of the Salvation Army Red Shield Community Center in the Pico Union Neighborhood. I'm here to ask the City Council to support the 4-1 vote last week of the Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, and River Committee to reject the recommendation from Park and Recs to grant Live Nation the contract to operate the Greek Theater. I'm here to speak on the good work and the outstanding good neighbor attitude of AEG and the Nederlanders on the day-to-day operations of their business in communities that they serve. They listen to the community. I have experienced firsthand the improvement of quality of life since AEG came into the downtown area, I mean, the Pico Union Neighborhood. And I can't tell you the improvement that they have provided through jobs, through traffic mitigation, through listening to the community. And that is what we need to do, is listen to the community. I know that there was an outpouring of community support for the proposal from AEG and the Nederlanders, and I would ask the council to hear the voice of the everyday people that work and live in your communities, that need that kind of support from corporate companies, that hear the community, that give back, and have proven time and time again to make a difference in the quality of life of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene.
Good afternoon. I'm Ann Savage. I'm with the LA Conservation Corps. We focus on providing job skills training and education for at-risk youth while enhancing the community through environment and service projects. I'm also here to speak to you about the upcoming Greek Theater project and to support the Niederlander AEG proposal. We've worked with AEG for over 15 years. We know they care about the community. We know the improvements that they've made, particularly in the South Park area, and the community projects that they've worked with us on. In addition, they've hired many of our corps members, which is really the ultimate goal for what we do, is to help them transition to employment. So, please support the strong decision from the Arts, Health, Aging, and River Committee, and vote for Niederlander AEG. Thank you.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighland.org. We had Rudy Swornich here. He was a city councilman. You wouldn't even show his face. How rude. He was an LA city councilman. Rest in peace, Rick Orlov, Daily News reporter. Please, rest in peace. Okay, I was contradicted here about the borders of the Byzantine District. Just go to Pico and Crenshaw, and look, and you'll see a big sign that says Byzantine District. But, in any way, you have decided that you have the right to contradict me when I am wrong and stop me. Okay, this is what I'm saying. I am filing Fair Political Practices Commission, State Commission. I'm filing against Glenn Daye and against Mayor Garcetti. They have what is, in fact, a spousal gay relationship. It is the level of spousal, although neither of them have reported this to the FPCC. Now, in fact, as he... The mayor has given his gay lover a job over at Metropolitan Water District. Unlike here, that is a well-paid job, because he knows something about water. Again, contradict me. Glenn Daye, come to my website. Contradict me.
Chris Y. Chris Y.
Not wanting you will, because you know it's true. You know it's true.
Mr. Corretts.
Just for the record, I don't believe that any of the mayor's appointees to the Metropolitan Water District are paid.
Not in a paid role, the commissioner. Thank you. That's the record. Sir.
Thank you, President, and council members, and the media, and the public that's here, and of course, the public abroad through the TV and internet. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I came here for two purposes. One is to ask why I was not allowed to speak about three weeks ago, when I asked to be heard on a public comment matter, and I was denied. I've been to my councilman's office three times, and I wrote a letter and hand-delivered, and I never got a response back. I also went to Councilman Parker's office and asked his deputy, and never got a response back. And I also met LaRonde, and I didn't get a response, other than he thought the city attorney could prepare a memo, because there might be a justification. But according to the Brown Act, I'm not aware of any justification for denying a citizen and a resident who's paid over $100,000 in taxes over the last 20 years. If that means my time is up, then I just do that one request.
Thank you very much. Like to call Mr. Herman. Run the clock.
Mr. Speaker, I believe you gave the two women two minutes, and now you're subjecting us to one minute. I find that offensive, violation of the Brown Act, not just to individual speakers, but to individuals who are here with disabilities that you do not allow because of your censorship. And it is unreasonable. The city attorney knows damn well that it's unreasonable, but this is your action. So I say to all of you in protest, do not vote for Kukarian in District 2. Do not vote for Jose Weezer in District 2, because the two fools cannot sit in their seat and take criticism from the best. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, and I, your constituent in the Brown Act ADA, Mr. Herman. And top in note, what did we hear about the presentation? Fight for due process, our rights to appeal liens, and not sacrifice the taxpayers. Bunch of bullshit by the process of unreasonable liens.
Eric Previn. Eric Previn is not in the building. Note the card.
My name is Ruth Sarnoff. I came here today to talk to you about Excide Technologies. I had an encounter with them some more than, probably more than 10 years ago, and I took a lot of information to the LA Unified School Unified School District at that time, including photos and a great deal of information. I have a file on Excide Technologies. It was not called Excide at that time. By the way, the Department of Toxic Substance Control did not even exist at the time that this company started functioning, which was 33 years ago, and DTSC, I believe, is about 20 years old. So there's a long history with this company being without permit. And they're back in the news, and they're under federal investigation, and they should-- I would like to talk to someone, because I know things that should go to the grand jury.
Thank you, Ruth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Barajas.
I think one of the points I want to make is that we are now literally on the edge of World War III. Now, the reason why anybody would ask me, why the hell do I come to City Hall for this? Is because my own congressman isn't even listening to me. So it's a serious situation when you have a citizen who cares enough to save people from that situation, but yet to have people not respond to that citizen who does that. What it typifies, in my judgment, reading some of the classics, is a fall of the inner failure, but also a tragedy on the part of others. So if you want to live--
Mr. Spindler.
Anyway, we-- the campaign donors have a potential problem. Seems that March the 4th is coming in a primary, and CD2's Paul Krikorian only has about $37,000 in the bank for his election. So please, if you're in CD2, just give a buck. Stop by his local office. I mean, you know, a little bit counts a lot. He's the best, one of the best. Well, actually, Keretz is the best, but he's one of the best that money can buy. So also, certain people were allowed to be given two minutes to speak today at public comment. Yours truly was only given one minute. That violates the Brown Act and the city charter.
I do not have a card, but I would assume somewhere there would be one for Mr. Do-- Mr. Akala.
I actually filed a card on almost every item, but anyway. Today, I want to be very gentle to City Council. You are all really beautiful people, except Fuentes. I don't like you. For no reason at all. Okay, Fuentes? You're okay with that? I don't like you. Anyway, I just came to have fun today. You can tell, right? You want to go have a fiesta after this?
He should be directing his comments to the council.
Oh, oh, he's not part of the council?
Council as a whole.
Council as a whole, as an asshole.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you very much. That is the last general public comment card that I have, so that portion of our meeting is concluded. That brings us where? Madam Clerk.
Item 13, caused by Councilmember Buscagno.
Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item, colleagues, is in support of Congresswoman Maxine Waters' efforts as it relates to the Import-Export Bank, which has provided more than $27.3 billion in financing. This was in 2013, enabling $34.7 billion in exports and supporting more than 205,000 jobs nationwide. Small businesses need more certainty and protection to compete in new markets and help create jobs, which is why XM Bank has financed more small businesses in the last five years than in the previous 11 years combined. In 2013, nearly 90% of XM Bank's transactions supported American small businesses, including more than 134,000 jobs in the state of California alone. Support of the XM Bank enables local American businesses to get the financing needed to stay competitive internationally. In the ever-global economy, American businesses need the assurances provided by XM Bank financing to reach lucrative markets overseas. Furthermore, this financing is needed to compete with global competitors such as China and Germany with export credit agencies many times the size of the U.S. XM Bank. The XM Bank assists American jobs at no cost to the taxpayer. In fact, the XM Bank actually contributed more than $1 billion to the U.S. Treasury Department in 2013 through the fees charged for its services. Today, we're calling on Congress to show that you can govern and get the work of the people done by passing a bill that provides for the long-term reauthorization of the Import-Export Bank of the United States. I ask for your support in this item and move forward on it. Thank you.
Mr. Labons. Congresswoman Janice Hahn feel about it? How does Congresswoman Janice Hahn feel about it?
Her, like many of the Democrats, support this--
Strongly supportive.
Yes, on this resolution.
Ms. Hahn is for it, I'm for it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Members, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen, aye.
Okay, that brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Item 6, caused by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item 6.
Could I have the CAO come up at this time, please? And I just want to say, I understand how this came about in Schedule H, but one of the things, I think we dealt with this when we had the issue of dealing with the new business exemptions, that many people felt uncomfortable not having that analysis to determine which one of these should be changed, what should be merged, why we're reducing them a dollar here, a dollar there. And at that time, we asked that in the future, but we narrowly focused on the business exemption, that we not have these come forward without having some research and analysis that gives us a better sense, as opposed to just picking numbers out of the air, or picking one business over another and not understanding how they impact the city, how businesses that we're picking are hiring local citizens. And so it's just one of those things that I had a discomfort in reading. I know it was in measure in the Schedule H. I interpreted that to mean we were going to get some analysis when it came back, not just a motion that says, or a piece of legislation that said, implement it. And so I'm just concerned, and we'll have to do another motion, and ask that business tax, we should get some research and analysis to accompany recommendations, so that we're not just throwing a dart in the air and expect a result. Because from me, I studied it a little bit. I don't know whether one of these businesses are better suited, or whether it better suits Los Angeles, or whether more people are living in Los Angeles and working in those businesses. Those are the things that I think I'm missing when we get to the point of just picking different categories to merge or move and reduce over three years, something like $45 million out of business tax, with no assurance that what moves we make are going to generate either that much or more over the next three years. So that's my concern, is that the lack of analysis, and I know we voted on it, but I just thought we were going to get more analysis when it came forward.
Melissa Krantz, Office of the CAO. Yes, that was true. There was a motion with regard-- that was adopted with regards to the renewal of the new business exemption, and that study would be forthcoming when that ordinance does expire. With regards to this ordinance, it does just adjust the top classification, which pays the highest rate. That's $5.07 per $1,000 of gross receipts. And that those-- that classification that it applies to are the professionals, which are fairly mobile, so our office is comfortable that that would benefit the people who most have-- would have the most incentive to leave the city if-- with this higher rate. Additionally, because this is a reduction that is fixed, it is known, it doesn't have any triggers, there gives that kind of guarantee to businesses that this is a reform that's in place that won't, you know, that won't have triggers that might not happen. So there is some surety with this particular ordinance.
My concern is, we always zero in on whether the business leaves, but we pay little attention to who the employees are. So if a business is in L.A. and they're hiring all their employees outside of L.A., what is our real benefit in the sense of these kinds of incentives when city residents aren't benefiting from it?
That's-- and that is a difficulty with trying to assess, because the kind of information that the Office of Finance collects does not include the number of employees that a business employs.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, that's what my concern is. That's what the analysis, I think, we asked for in the past.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you. Colleagues, today we're making an important down payment in the commitment to eliminate the city's grocery receipts tax once and for all. And there are a number of measures where I wouldn't mind L.A. retaining the number-one position, but the highest business tax in L.A. County is not one of them. We are surrounded by more business-friendly cities in the 15th District, Long Beach, Torrance, Gardena. So I ask, you put yourself in the mindset of an entrepreneur-turned-startup business owner in Southern California. Why set up shop in Los Angeles if you know you'll be paying higher taxes than you'd open a headquarters in Torrance, or Gardena, or Long Beach? As I said, the issue is especially important for my district. We are surrounded by neighboring jurisdictions with the lower tax rate. It's incredibly difficult for my commercial and industrial property owners to compete for tenants when they know they can go across the street and pay less tax. Just ask the owners of Topaz in downtown San Pedro. I also know that providing the services that make businesses want to open in L.A. will ultimately help with our general fund dollars and help with police and fire service, tree trimming, street repair, which all cost money, money that the current grocery receipt tax provides. The small but deliberate steps that we take today strike that appropriate balance, stimulating new business growth, cutting while cutting, without cutting the city services necessary to sustain that specific growth. So again, this is-- appreciate your work on this, moving forward on taking those steps to ultimately eliminate the grocery receipts tax as we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Bonning.
Thanks, Mr. President. Wanted to rise and basically say ditto to what Mr. Buscagno just said. Very well, very well stated. This is one of the top issues I hear about from the businesses in my district. I have a lot of folks who are starting out, trying to run a fitness center or a restaurant, and the way that we tax small businesses has been extremely problematic for them. I recently conducted a poll of the small businesses in my district, asked them about the business climate, and I got responses back from about 250 of them. And as some of you saw when I distributed it, businesses in my district, by two to one, said they're in favor of raising the minimum wage in the city of Los Angeles. Two-thirds of them said they don't think it will have any negative impact on them at all. At the same time, I asked them, what are the things that are a drag on business in Los Angeles? And the number-one thing they listed was the city's grocery receipts tax. They said that the-- 35% of them said the best thing we could do to help their business would be to start phasing out the grocery receipts tax. Number two, at 19%, was reducing traffic congestion. And number three, at about 13%, was streamlining the L.A. City permitting process. This is something that's really important to the businesses. You hear about it all the time. I'm glad we're doing it in a prudent way, that we're doing this judiciously, so we're not hitting our revenues too much all at once, but it's a direction we need to be going in, and I'm very glad that we're doing it. Thank you.
Okay, there are no more speakers on the queue. Let's prepare to vote on this item. If we could open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Madam Clerk, what's-- thank you. What's before this body?
Council has motions for post-stem referral.
They are posted, and they are referred.
That clears the desk.
Members, announcements? Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you. Thank you. Colleagues and those listening this evening, in Echo Park, the Board of Police Commissioners will be meeting at 6:30 at Saunders-Sisterneros Learning Center, and that is at 1018 Mohawk Street, on one of their community commission meetings, and I encourage everyone to attend and see how the police commission works and conducts its business. It's a very, very important meeting, and I hope to see everyone there.
Any other announcements, members? No announcements? Item 6, fourth width. I thought I had done that. Okay. No other-- No, no, no. You-- if you missed it, we're now in a different phase. Sorry about that. Let us all rise for adjourning motions. If we could have everyone in the audience, please stand.
Let's not waste time with him.
Look, we're not going to-- Mr. Herman, would you please rise? We're adjourning in-- Could you help find-- Yeah, well, I guess it just shows how he respects absolutely nothing. This is a very difficult time for a lot of us in this building, a lot of us around this horseshoe. I think in the past, we've, on certain days, just because of the relationship with the individual that has transitioned to home, we have done only one adjourning motion on that day, and this is a prime candidate to do the same. So, members, this will be the only adjourning motion today. Any other ones, you can do tomorrow or Friday. But we lost a class act yesterday in Rick Orloff. An individual that personally, I believe, Mr. Labons and I may have known him the longest, and maybe Mr. Parks. When I arrived here in 1987, he came shortly thereafter, and we would joke with one another about being able to see eye to eye. And I don't think I ever considered him, even though he was a great journalist, I did-- he was just a friend. He was a class act. And, members, in my opinion, I just don't think this building will see another individual like that. Life is changing. Times are changing. People move on, and the media itself is changing. And for those of us that knew Rick Orloff a long time, we need to count our blessings, because he was as solid as a rock, a man of honor, and a man that made it easy for you to want to have a conversation with. For those of you that have just met him, you should consider yourself lucky that you did meet him. Every day, personally, that I've been affiliated with this business in this city, when I was at work, Rick Orloff was here, somewhere, except for yesterday. So he will truly be missed by all of us and his colleagues. A committee was-- I mean, a committee. A motion was circulated today. It's going to come to my office, where we will have a conversation about the perfect way to commemorate his life, memorialize his life. to commemorate his life, memorialize his life. With that said, you know, because I know a lot of us have something to say, I just, the only thing that just kind of gets me is that for a moment, we really wish that something would just stop, just for a moment. It doesn't, but maybe we can just, as a body, stop for a moment and remember a man that was a fixture to this council. I'd like to ask Ms. Martinez if you wanted to add on.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Rick Orloff, a dear friend, a mentor, and a member of the Valley family. Rick was born in Chicago on August 12, 1948. He moved to Encino when he was 12 years old and graduated from CSUN with a degree in journalism. And in 1978, Rick took a job with the Daily News and changed the landscape of Los Angeles' journalism. For nearly 30 years, Mr. Orloff not only covered Los Angeles politics, but became a cornerstone of our city. He loved journalism and worked tirelessly to bring news and to the residents of Los Angeles, and brought the news to the public until the day he died. City Hall will not be the same without him. Rick made it feel warmer, kinder, and he always made you feel at home, and he will always hold a special place in my heart. You meet a lot of reporters in our line of work, but from the beginning, Rick always stood out. I met Rick when I was beginning my career in politics, and what always struck me was the personal touch he gave. We spoke about our lives, our families, and he genuinely cared about reporting and keeping a high standard in his industry. His stories weren't a gotcha journalism, no, he cared about Los Angeles. And even when the industry changed and shifted, he remained a good reporter covering City Hall fairly and thoroughly. There are few reporters that I will remember in my lifetime, but Rick is definitely one of them, and I know some of you will feel the same. He was wonderful to talk to, and he always made you feel comfortable. I always felt like I was talking to my friend about my district, and today I'm sorry to say goodbye to my friend that I will miss dearly. He is survived by his sister, Joanne Levy, her husband, two nieces, one nephew, and three great nephews, and one great niece. A public memorial will be held at his sister's home at 2:00 PM on Thursday in Beverly Hills, and a separate public memorial for him will is also being planned by the Daily News. Rick was the dean of the public corps here, press corps here at City Hall. He's respected for being tough but fair. He was a gentleman and an excellent journalist, and I will miss you, my friend. May he rest in peace.
And added to that, this horseshoe, this building, was every bit as important to Rick and his life as it is to each and every one of us. Mr. Sedia.
Thank you for that, Nury. You were right on point. He was a a quality journalist, not of this new era, not of the gotcha, not petty or picky un, but really did care about the city and telling the stories of the city. But more than that, he was a quality human being. And I was so flattered the first time he came to visit me in the Senate. You know, we're not from the Valley, and I didn't think our stories were, you know, had that relevance, but he had come to visit me and sit down and talk about a story as probably the driver's license. But what impressed me more so, because I was very flattered that he came down downtown to my office, was he's a real friend. He took interest in you. You didn't think he even knew you or noticed you, and you know, he, after my wife passed away, he'd ask how I was doing. Who does that? Just a real, real good human being and a real gentleman. We all kind of take things for granted, and I think we took him for granted, and, you know, we were all conscious, I was conscious vigilant of of his health, but, you know, I just saw him the other day. I mean, we'd, you know, say something, little exchange, and I had no sense, I actually thought he was, he looked better than last time I saw him, and, you know, you think about that, and he didn't leave this building. And he finished doing exactly what he loved, and that's really, really a blessing, really special. He probably had other choices, but he chose to tell our stories, and that's just something really special, and so, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Nury. We will miss him, a real gentleman.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
I just wanted to add on, he was a really special person. He, you know, I, he didn't know me until a couple of years ago, when we started asking questions about a mobile billboard bill, but but I knew him for many years because he was not just a fixture of of City Hall, he really was a fixture for the San Fernando Valley. I mean, he, you know, we talked about how he grew up in the Valley, went to high school in Birmingham High. He embodied so much of what was good about about reporting, what was good about the San Fernando Valley. You know, when I think of one word to try to describe him, I think mensch. He really is a mensch in that he's just, he was a good person who cared about the city, he cared about community, and he really made his life's work made a difference. And as I said, I got to know him a little bit over these last couple of years and was so impressed by him, getting to meet him personally, but even more impressed by his years of work and having read his work. He is the person for all of my constituents in the West Valley, he brings City Hall to life. Every, you know, there's, everyone in the Valley reads reads what he writes, and he's, he will be sorely missed, and may he rest in peace.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't, I didn't have the honor of knowing Mr. Orloff for a very long time, but in the short period of time, I can say that it was a real pleasure to work with him. He was a man who lived and breathed news and politics, someone who covered every major news event in this town for the last four decades with grace, precision, honor, and class. I've heard that as a, as good as he was as a newsman, he was even better mentor to scores of young professionals in the in the building, several in this room. And he was a generous, kind, humble gentleman, and I am, I think the least we can do is honor his memory by memorializing his favorite space in this building in his name, and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. For many decades, the Daily News has been the newspaper of record for the San Fernando Valley. And for 35 years of that time, Rick Orloff was one of the brightest lights and most important voices in that newspaper of record. His passing yesterday truly did, I mean, it sounds almost trite to say, but it truly was the end of an era. Because Rick was the kind of journalist journalist that was of the old school, and he knew and understood that his job in this room and in this building hit, what he did for the public was every bit as important, maybe more important, than the work that we do for the public. At the same time, he also knew that we had a job to do as well, and that we weren't antagonists, we weren't on opposite sides, we were both, in our own way, serving the city and serving the public. And Rick really understood that in a way that sometimes gets lost in the era of the blogosphere. He was a source of institutional knowledge in this building like few others, and especially at a time when we make policy in in complicated areas that stretch over many years or many decades, but some of us, we kind of come and go, and we have term limits, and we have other things, people come, people go. But Rick remained, and Rick saw it all through many mayors and many council members, he saw it all. And that afforded him the ability to hold us accountable and to often, not in a gotcha way, but to often be a source of information as well, of the way something had been tried in the past and worked or didn't work. I know that I considered him not only always tough but always fair, but also always generous with a kind word, but also with information that helped me to do my job better. And so I think it's no coincidence that as we adjourn today in Rick's memory, we see so many of his colleagues from the press corps here, because they all, I think, held him in the, with the greatest degree of respect as we all did. I think you mentioned, Mr. President, that it would, it was a shock if you didn't see Rick here in this chamber because of his devotion to his work and his his ethic, his work ethic. Just a couple of days ago, I had no idea that Rick was as ill as he was. He interviewed me, maybe I might have been the last interview that that he did on Friday, and he wasn't here, he was calling in from home, apparently quite ill, but still doing his work, and still doing it just the way he always did, with with grace, with assertiveness, but with with good faith, with class, and I just, I think we'll all so miss Rick on a personal level, but our city is really going to miss him as the institution of journalism that he was. May he rest in peace.
He was calm, he was like this, you know, what is that, that back in the day, the commercial, never let them see you sweat? I mean, that was Rick, and and I would hate if he played poker, I don't think I'd ever play with him, because he'd look at you when the hap, when he was happy, he looked one way, when he was angry, he was just a constant, reliable, count-on dude, man, he was just a good dude, a good friend. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was very sad news yesterday. I started thinking back to when I first met Rick. I met him about 18 years ago when I started working for Ruth Galanter, and I thought back that Rick was as kind and friendly and warm to me as a first-week, wet-behind-the-years council deputy as he was as an elected official. After I got sworn in, he didn't treat me as anything bigger than I ever was before, and when I started here in this building, he didn't treat me as anything smaller than anybody in this building. He was as interested then as he was last week in who I was, or how I was doing, or what I was up to. And that's an incredible testimony, because there's not a lot of folks who are like that. I also want to talk about the kind of reporter Rick was, though. I remember when I first moved to LA in the early 90s, I used to read all the newspapers voraciously to try to read about the city, and I was amazed at the the volume of coverage of LA City Hall from the the Valley newspaper. And so much of that was Rick, doing tons of stories on all the tumult in the LAPD at the time, all the different stuff going on at City Hall. And, you know, it it strikes me that during most of his career with the Daily News, competing with the LA Times, Rick was out-resourced because the Times invested a lot more in staff and money. He had to do what he did and impart information in fewer column inches, because the Daily News did shorter stories than the Times, and he had to do more stories per day. You know, there's, there's a day when an LA Times story may be working on one story, and Rick routinely was doing three or four. And and he always did great journalism when he did that, and you learn from what he did. He was also incredibly adaptable. As Mr. Krikorian said, Rick was an old-school newspaper man. He came from the the days of the ink-stained wretch, and, you know, he continued into the age of of blogs and social media, and a lot of his generation didn't make that transition very well. But Rick had a Facebook page, he had a Twitter account, he had the sausage factory, he was blogging. Even before that was popular, he didn't confine himself just to newsprint. He'd be on Bill Rosendahl's television show, he'd go on the radio to talk about stuff. He really was interested in using whatever means he could to get information out. He was, in so many ways, a gentleman journalist, and I and I don't mean that in a way to say that he wasn't a tough journalist, because he was. He was tough, but he wasn't mean. He was skeptical of us always, but he was never cynical. He was fast at his craft, but he wasn't sloppy, he was still accurate. And he was a really nice guy, but he wasn't a pushover at all. He was still tough, and like the rest of you, I'm really gonna miss him. May he rest in peace.
He was class. Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you. I too saddened by the, here this, the death of of Rick. With the merger of the newspapers, the Los Angeles Newspaper Group, we have been accustomed the last several years to see Rick's byline in the Harbor area. And he was here, the dean of all journalists who have graced us with his presence, and as a 37-year-old who walked into these chambers in 2012, he was the first, one of the first people I met here, and shared with me the ins and outs, and told me that I'll be fine, I'll be fine, I'll never forget that. And in the course of the last three years, he's been very fair and factual in his reporting. Just gonna miss him dearly, and it's, it's our duty, colleagues, to memorialize him somewhere in this building, and I I hope we take the appropriate measures to do that, and because he he's so well-deserving.
Mr. Labons.
Yeah, Mr. President, back in 1978, when Rick got here, there was a lot of turmoil in which way the city was going. We had a great new mayor, Mayor Bradley, who had a great vision, the city council president had a great vision, and Montreal just had their problems with the Olympics, and all of a sudden, this whole thing comes along, how Los Angeles wants the Olympic Games again, and the big fight, eight to seven vote, we got the games, which was so important. But all that spun, and the advent of talk radio, all that spun out, and from that area of the Olympic movement, the era where there was a straight focus by others on the LAPD and what the LAPD should be, and all the turmoils and the succession of chiefs, there was a great mother of an earthquake that greatly affected the Valley, the riot for the citywide, I had the wrong sequence, the secession movement, which is real, 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 all that he covered here. The new mayor, Han Riordan, and he was very close to Riordan, because Riordan was Riordan, and Mr. Riordan had a relationship. The fact that you'd see four stories in the paper that Rick had to do, had to work harder, and everybody didn't have the luxury, as you mentioned, Michael, as Los Angeles Times once had luxury for. But all that he's covered, and I'm listening to what everyone's saying so eloquently, I think the only two things that are gonna be here, because if you go from 1978 today, if you go from today, you go out to 2045, so the two things that are gonna be here are gonna be these columns and a VAC. And people like a VAC, this is why I said that people like a VAC is one Rick always made friends with. He was as nice to the clerks. I'd see him moseying in the clerk's office, and he'd be looking for something, or moseying in other offices, trying to find, not stupid, but mo, he had relationships with people, and he was a lovely man. And I will also tell you this, why, I'm proud of people, and no disrespect for those who are not from Los Angeles, but what I know, you went to Roosevelt, or Cleveland, or San Fernando. Rick went to Birmingham, San Pedro, Mary Star of the Sea on Sundays, but San Pedro, right? Hamilton High, it makes me feel special that everyone's tied, that we got here, that we got here. Rick got here from Birmingham High School, to the educators of that public school, and later on to Cal State Northridge, which transferred from San Fernando Valley State. So he had that ability, and then he was such a lovely man who loved his job, because I would often walk out of here and I, there's a door you walk through, it's shorter, and you know what the walk through would push this Mitch Englander security checkpoint there. You can walk through, and there's Rick working, or Dakota working, or others that are working. And that was it. May there be a richest man like Rick Orloff who lived and loved, and I sure hope when he got to the gates that he's smiling and then relaxing, because he got to the gates, that he's smiling and then relaxing, because he needs to relax, as we all do when we meet our final maker. So, God bless. You know, he's asking St. Peter for an interview, and he said, "I don't give interviews." And he says, "No, but I'll get you one, because you're a nice guy." Rick was a great guy, he is part of the fabric of this building, and I don't know at all whether there'd be someone who will work five, or 10, or 15 years ever at a place. He gave his whole career to this place, and we thank his employer for knowing, they knew he was a great one, and they kept him in the right place. God bless Rick Orloff and his family.
Here, here. So, let's pay him the ultimate respect. So, just for a moment, let's not look at the time, let's not move, let's not make a call, let's not text, let's just freeze time for a few seconds to think about a very, very good guy. I'm just too old to stay still any longer than that, so that was my, my max. With that said, members, this meeting is adjourned.